Okay. I think we are ready to begin.
Do we need a roll call and all that from Jean?
Yep, Jean's working.
I want to get a motion to enter into public session.
I'll make a motion to enter public session, this is Courtney.
And that was done? Okay, I'll move to roll call, Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Mr. Nevins?
Here.
This is Wilson. This is Jess Kula.
Here.
Mr. Dytherfer? All right, we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance of the United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, comments from the public on agenda items, just a reminder for those members of the public in attendance, this is one of two opportunities afforded members of the public to comment on or inquire about agenda items. Members of the public also have an opportunity, at the end of the evening's agenda, to ask questions or voice concerns or comments on matters not formally noted on the agenda, and we do appreciate everybody's cooperation.
And I would just point out there, Jeff, that again, comments are being taken at boecomments@manans.org. At this point in time, I see none listed in the queue. But again, folks will have a second option at the end of the meeting, and again, that's boecomments@manans.org.
Before we get to approval of the minutes, I'd like to take a minute, I know it's not on the agenda, it has been in the past, and hopefully it can be put on there going forward. I'd like to take a moment of silence, obviously for all the victims of the COVID-19 crisis that we're in here today, as well as the recent murder of George Floyd, and all that are affected by that, if we could take a moment. Thank you. We will move along to the approval of the minutes, are there anybody, does anybody have any questions? Let's see, I'm actually just looking at my video on, they do. Any questions on the approval of the minutes from the previous board meeting?
No questions.
No questions here.
If not, if I could get a resolution and we'll go in line, starting with Courtney, the way we typically do when we're sitting together, that would probably be the best way to go.
It was all that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District accept the minutes of the May 11th, 2020 meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. We'll move along to business matters. We have one discussion item, that's the building project update.
And I will start with that, Jeff, and then we also have the gentleman here from CSRCH, if they want to contribute anything, and also to address any questions later on the agenda with the change orders, so. If we can find silver linings, which I am doing my best to do in these difficult times, one of those silver linings is the fact that with the building vacated, we have been able to get a significant jumpstart on the work that was scheduled to begin after school closed this summer. And I think I can say that the bulk, if not all of the renovation, is done now, with a lot of work occurring, and it's amazing to take a walk through at the end of every day and see the space that we vacated for district office now beginning to take shape. The three classrooms that were across the hall from where we are currently located that are now becoming centralized services for students with actually painted walls and ceilings and demolition downstairs, so. And we've been able to have some very positive conversations as well, based on the fact that we are, in essence, ahead of schedule and under budget about some of those items that we have talked about, some of those are touched upon in those change orders tonight, that we are going to be able to move forward with. The other piece of good news as it relates to the budget is we did have our bond sale this week, we have yet to have the closing, we've got some paperwork to pull together for that. But I'll remind the board that when we initially were forecasting, when we were looking at this all pre-vote, we assumed those bond sales would be at 5%. When we did our most recent update with Bernie Donigan, we were looking at the low to mid-two range. Our bond sale came in at 1.54%. And I have a note here from Jason that says, "This is fantastic compared to what we expected. Easily the lowest rates I have seen on 15-year bonds in my decade working in the field." So, good news, and Bill, we have a number for you, there. 1.54.
So, my very poor internet connection, you cut out, what was the rate?
1.54.
Outstanding, thank you.
Okay, so.
Only took you about five years to get that number, Bill, but I'm sure it was worth the wait.
Yes, that's a good number, I'll take it.
So, that's all I have specific to the building project update at this point in time. I know Dan and Scott are on the line, and I don't know if they have anything additional they would like to add to that.
I do not, Scott, if you are, jump in, yep.
Rob is on the line. Okay. To Ed Lib, what he would probably say would echo exactly what you just said, that we are significantly into what would otherwise be July's work by this time. The early move, the early vacancy of the district office space has been really good to take advantage of. And as Maureen said, the the new reconfiguration can be seen, we're actually getting into different areas of finish now. Skeletons have come out of the closet, and I think that's what we want to talk about tonight. And that we are reasonably past the skeletons in the closet, and I've heard me say that before, last year relative to that work. One of the things that's in front of you, that you have seen or are looking at this evening, is we came across some unforeseen conditions that involved hazardous materials, some pipe insulation that was buried within one of the original walls, which was behind other finished walls. It was in the flooring of the building. Another component that we ran across was structural deficiencies that were kind of precariously pieced together in a previous work. So, structural engineer had to get involved, we had to have some walls to we're moving.
Hey, Scott, Scott. Just one quick, you may want to turn your video off real quick because your connection's not very good, and your voice is cutting out a couple of times, so by cutting the video, it might get better. Sorry.
Okay, no.
We can still hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. It's, yeah, it's coming in and out to me, too.
It's not a good connection, can we move on for a minute until he can square away?
Scott, you're still pretty garb-
Yeah.
So, Scott, you're still pretty garb- Okay, and I think what we will do, unless board members have particular questions, is we, it sounds like Scott was going down the road of the change orders anyway.
We could do that later.
On the agenda. So, if we have specific questions to that, we can bring them up in that portion of the agenda. But before we move away from building project, other than change orders, are there any questions or comments that members of the board would like to make? All righty, you're all set, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing anything. I'm looking across here, let me just double check my screen. Okay, so we'll move along to budget transfer, that's the next item on there. Are there any questions about the budget transfer item that's in your packet? If not, can I get a resolution, please?
I have warrant information.
Mill, you're on mute?
Yep. Missed the warrants, Jeff.
Was I on mute, am I on mute now?
No, you're good.
Sorry, no, no, you're absolutely right, my screen skipped on me, so I'm sorry. We went from business matters, business office for information, so we'll start with that. My apologies, enclosed for the information, the board are copy of warrant numbers 56, 57, 59, and 60, Fund A and 23, 24, Fund H for the month of May 2020. Are there any questions about any of those warrant numbers?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, we'll move along to business office for approval, which is the budget transfer. If there are no questions about the budget transfer for May 2020, can I get a resolution?
It was all that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District approved the attached budget transfer for May 2020.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries, we will move along to the treasures report, enclosed for, closes the treasures report for the month of May 2020. Are there any questions about the said treasures report?
Learn to read vertically.
Yes.
You haven't learned to read vertically yet, Bill? Any questions, yes, no, clarifications? All right, we will move along to a resolution, please.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the School District approved treasures report for the month of
Second.
Second from Bill, okay, any all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries. Hey, Jen, can you turn your microphone up a little bit, you were a little, you're a little vague, I don't know if you can or can't?
I'm struggling today with this.
That's better.
That's better.
Just did a lot better, yeah.
Okay.
Keep doing what you're doing. All right, we'll move along to change orders, so this is the area where we have several change orders. It looks like number 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, and 50. They're all under the general contractors in the 4,000 to 5,000 range in their increases. I'm sorry, their approved changes are varying from $500 to about $19,000, all increases, are there any questions about those?
I think those were asked and answered earlier on the changes of what they actually related to, I'm assuming everybody got an email on that?
Yeah, I did, yes.
Yeah, is this the asbestos-
I'm good with that.
Yes, the email that went out today, the first two items were owner requested, and it had to do with the sound level in the cafeteria and addressing that, and the removal of the concrete risers in the, what is now the music room and will be a classroom, to increase usable floor space. And then the ones beyond that, from 47 on, have to do with the abatement, and also the structural issues that Scott started to speak about a little bit earlier.
Thank you.
All right, so if there are no other questions about those change orders, can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approve the following change orders, as listed.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Before I let the gentleman from CSRCH log off, does anybody else have any other questions or comments for them?
Hello? What would it cost to get a drinking fountain in the new middle school wing installed?
I'm already getting a quote on that, Bill. I should have one the next time we come together.
Nice to see everybody's doing well. Good luck with the budget.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Scott, thanks, Dan, for joining us, we appreciate it.
Sorry about the connection, if you can hear me.
We appreciate you joining us.
All right, good evening.
All righty. So, we will move along to personnel matters, it looks like modification of end dates of probationary appointments. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District modify the end dates of the following probationary appointments. Are there any questions? If not, can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District hereby modify the end dates of the following probationary appointments in accordance with New York State Education law.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries. Two appointments. Media specialist, Aaron Lang, can we get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District does hereby appoint Aaron Lang to a four-year probationary appointment in the one FPE school media specialist tenure area on MS Step One of the current Manans Association of Teachers' salary schedule. Miss Lang's probationary period will begin on September 3, 2019, and will end on or about August 31, 2023, in accordance with the memorandum of understanding signed on or about August 28, 2019.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
And I just want to say we're happy to have Ms. Lang continue with us in Manans City.
All right, we've got Board of Education matters, CSC, CPSC recommendations, can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District approved the CSC, CPSC recommendations as submitted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries. We'll move along to, let's see here, 2020, 2021, Manans Union Free School District Public Library vote in elections, the election officials. Obviously, we've moved the date there. Can I get a resolution, please? There's someone, if you're not talking, could you put it on mute, there's a lot of papers shuffling around. Thank you.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District appoint the following Board of Registration and Election Officials for the 2020, 2021 budget vote and elections, as listed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries. Health Services Contracts for the 2019, 2020 school year, the Albany City School District. Enclosed, please find copies of the 2019, 2020 Health Services Contracts for students attending private or parochial schools in the following districts, Albany City School District, 23 students in the amount of $19,696.94, and the residents of these students have been verified.
Can I just chime in quick?
Absolutely.
I get a chance just to thank Kathy, Jean, and Sue, apparently all the work they did to actually verify residents, the residency of these students, it looks like the original bill was 38, turned out to be only 23 kids, looked like a savings of close to, if I'm looking at it, $20,000, so I want to just say thank you to them for the hard work they had to do to verify the residency of students that attended Manans.
Thank you, Mr. Nevins. If there are no further comments or questions, can I get a resolution, please?
It was all that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District approved the 2019, 2020 Health Services Contract for 23 total students attending private or parochial schools in the above listed districts for the above amount.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries. Will belong to school calendar, please find the enclosed revised 2019, 2020 school calendar. Are there any questions? Now, can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District amend the 2019, 2020 school calendar to adjust the official last day of school and online instruction to June 17, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Resolution carries. We've got clubs, sports, mentoring, and other stipends. It is requested that the Board approve the attached revised list of staff member compensation during the 2019, 2020 school year for work performed outside of the regular school day, as per the MAT contract.
And if I could chime in there, Jeff, just real quick to explain color coding, because I, I think this is the fourth revision we've had this year. So, you have certain rows that are highlighted in green, those are those third trimester clubs and sports that couldn't happen because we weren't present. So, those have been reflected to show no stipend because they were third trimester only, or to show the reduction because third trimester wasn't included with the others. And then there are some, I'll give you an example, yearbook, which though we were remote, was able to continue, and they were able to produce the yearbook, and those are those items highlighted in blue. And they will be paid for the third trimester.
Any questions? All right, if not, can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District approved the attached revised list of staff member compensation during 2019, 2020 school year of work performed outside of the regular school day, as per the MAT contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution carries. So, we will move along to CSRCH amended AIA Agreement for Services. Enclosed for the board is a copy of the amendment to the AIA Agreement for Services reflecting the reduction in compensation by $20,000. Are there any questions? Not, can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District approved the amendment to the AIA Agreement for Services reflecting the reduction in compensation by $20,000.
Thank you.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries. Next up is student matters, class size update as of the fifth, it looks like every grade except for sixth, fourth, sixth, and eighth are split, and a total of 300 students, very healthy. We'll move along to superintendent's comments, she has a few. You're on mute.
No, I was just getting there, Jeff. That this is our last scheduled board meeting, though we may schedule another one in a few minutes. I just want to take the opportunity to acknowledge and thank some individuals and some groups of folks. First, I would like to thank the PTA for all that they have done for us this year, and in particular lately, in very short order, pulling off virtual Field Day t-shirts, so that kids could have those while they were participating from home, so thank you for that. I know we're going, they have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday night, in which I believe they have their new elections scheduled moving into next year. So, I want to take the time to thank folks who sat in positions this past year, who will likely not be returning next year. I'd like to thank Vanessa Mercado, Courtney DeScola, and Nicole Keef for all of their work and efforts, and all of the opportunities that they have provided for our students and for our faculty and staff over this past year, so thank you very much. I would also like to, again, having it be our last scheduled meeting, acknowledge our retirees. This is not quite the way we wanted to do it, but I would like to acknowledge Mr. Blanchett, Mrs. Waldron, and Mrs. Schroder, and you will see on the list of upcoming events with the, really the spearheading of the faculty and staff, there will be a reverse parade held on June 16 to acknowledge those retirees, and I'm hopeful the turnout will be exceptional. I have also asked Mrs. Schroder to join us as a participant tonight, and would like to give her the opportunity to say a few words if she chooses to do that.
Hi, everyone, thank you, Dr. Long. I would like to thank the board, and Dr. Long, my coworkers, our students, their families, the community, for all of your support that you've provided me during the past 12 years. It has been an honor to work with each of you, where we focused on making thoughtful decisions that were always in the best interest of our students. Your dedication and commitment to our school community is admired and respected by me and by many others. I will miss each of you and applaud you for the amazing work that you do. It has been a privilege to serve as your principal. I will carry with me the experiences and the lessons that I've learned, and the wonderful memories of the place that became my home away from home for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schroder, we thank you for your service all these years, we will miss you.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Thanks, Tony. Also want to give some shout-outs to the many, though atypical ways we are doing it, end-of-the-year activities that, that folks have been able to pull off. It's been amazing to watch people pull together and, and make things happen to the extent we can. I've got a list here. Kudos first to our PE staff, and then this is no order whatsoever. But today kicked off our virtual Field Day, again, t-shirts went out last week. We still have t-shirts here, for those who didn't get them, we can pick, you can pick them up, or we can get them to you, thanks again to the PTA for the t-shirts. Tremendous job by the PE staff getting their coworkers and colleagues to all pitch in and videotape examples of all of the events, and put together a slide presentation. Folks, if you haven't seen that, please go take a look at it, it is pretty entertaining. To Carrie, Stephanie, and Lisa, who did an equally amazing job pulling off the virtual A to Z countdown, and putting together some tremendous videos incorporating, again, faculty, staff, our kids. To the many staff members who have participated and contributed to all of those things, thank you. To Trish, for Trish O'Connell, for orchestrating the virtual talent show. Again, if you haven't seen it, please do. The kids did a tremendous job, and there's some, also some adults that you may recognize in there as well. And it's just a really, a tremendous tribute of everybody doing everything they can to make sure our kids get the same opportunity, not the same, but an opportunity to do those things that we typically do at the end of the year. And we'll talk about a couple more of those in the upcoming events. Still some details and plans being worked out, and still some changes that keep being made on a Sunday afternoon by the governor that take our weeks and months of planning and kind of get us back to square one. and kind of get us back to square one, but we will get there, and we will do everything we can do to hold sacred those opportunities and events that we know are so important to our kids and to our school community. Looking ahead to next year, I want to talk a little bit about the conversations we are having. I know we have staff, I know we have parents, I know we have community wondering what next year will look like, and quite honestly, the answer is, at this point, we don't know. That said, we are having a lot of conversations around that. Regionally, as a BOSI's, we are having conversation around all facets of that, and they've done a lot of the work gearing up for that and are working with districts. We have identified an internal group of teachers here that met for the first time last week to begin to put our thoughts together, to then broaden that conversation with the greater staff, looking at it from the perspective of what is most important for our kids when they come back? How can we accomplish that? And how can we accomplish that within the parameters that are imposed on us by other folks and for all the right reasons, health, safety, and well-being of our students? Also, and I had sent out to the community at large, a few weeks ago, there was a statewide survey done, trying to gather feedback from all stakeholders. I will say there was over 100,000 responses to that survey, and a large representation from, from the capital region. So that is great news. We just, this afternoon, received the first bit of feedback, though limited from that survey. We will be looking at that over the coming days, because we really want to use the overarching statewide concerns and the capital region concerns that came out of that to then craft additional questions that we need to ask of our Manans School Community and parents as we gear up for that. So it will be a work in progress. A lot more information will be forthcoming, an opportunity to participate and provide feedback will be forthcoming. Just be patient with us as we work through that. And then last, on my agenda, I have a need for an additional June meeting. As, as Jeff alluded to earlier, the budget vote has been moved. Actually, it's been moved again. So we now will not know the outcome of the budget vote until June 16th. Typically, we know that in May, and once we know that, we begin the planning of our new fiscal year, which begins in July, which requires some board action typically to be taken at the June meeting. Obviously, we haven't had the budget vote yet, so we cannot take that action. So I would suggest strongly, and really, we have to schedule another June meeting to be able to do that and, and move forward without skipping a beat in a lot of respects. I had put out to the Board June 22nd, which is two weeks from tonight, and I had asked that you be prepared to let us know if that date would work for you, or if you had other possible dates.
Find that date.
The 22nd works for me. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
That's okay. So Bill is a yes, I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Janu, yes? Okay. All right, so we will get notice out for that meeting, June 22nd at 6:30. That is, unless the governor again changes the vote date.
If you don't want to do it the 23rd, he keeps pushing it almost by a week, so. 22nd it is, at 6:30. All right?
Thank you all.
All set, Dr. Long?
I am.
All right, we'll move along to informational material. Many things here, so obviously, starting today through the 12th is Virtual Field Day. And like the ninth absentee ballot budget vote, that's the ninth, that's when they are due to the office by 5 o'clock. The 16th of June, Tuesday, 3 o'clock, the Retirement Parade, as Dr. Long mentioned, for all our retirees. Let's see, the 17th, Wednesday, the last day of school. 25th, eighth grade graduation at 6:30 PM, more details to come. And July 13th, Monday, is our reorganizational board meeting at 6:30.
And Jeff, if I could make two comments on items there, because as I mentioned, there were several changes out of the governor's office this week. So on the budget vote, the vote date for hand-delivered ballots still remains June 9th. So if anybody wants to drop off their ballot, it has to be tomorrow by 5 PM. However, the governor has extended by executive order the mail-in date. We can accept mail-in ballots until June 16th at 5 PM, and we will begin counting at that time. So again, mail ballots will be accepted through the 16th, walk-in ballots will be accepted through tomorrow at 5:00. And all of that information was pushed out on Facebook and posted on our webpage, and I know that PTA pushed it out as well, and I thank them for doing that.
Dr. Long, they have to be received by the 16th, correct? Not postmarked?
They are not postmarked, because we went through a mail clearinghouse. They have to be.
Right, right, that's true, yes. So I just wanted to check. They have to be received by then.
Correct. But if you're handing them, and they have to be received by tomorrow. And also, though we are still working on this, I just put out there, one of the executive orders that the governor put out was relative to the possibility of in-person graduations, if you could limit them to a certain number. However, that does not take effect until June 26th. So we are having some conversation around if that might be a possibility for us. Mr. Herman, as the class advisor, has been having ongoing conversation with the eighth graders in particular, and their families, who are the most impacted by that, but we will continue those conversations, and, and that has the potential to change. The other piece that's, that's challenging to anybody trying to schedule any type of end of the year event is, all of these things are contingent upon things staying the way they need to in the region, in consideration of a number of metrics that need to be met. So if there is a backslide, then we're back to what we had to do before. But we continue to monitor all of that, day by day, minute by minute, hour by hour, to again, take those opportunities and, and things that we do at the end of the year, and try and do that to the extent that we can.
Dr. Long, I had another question about the Retirement Parade that's on the 16th. Do people have to let anybody know if they want to participate, or do they just show up at the school?
There's, there's pretty specific direction that was posted on the webpage today and Facebook. It's, it's really come as you plan to. There's some guidance and direction about safety protocols, and we are in touch with Manans PD to help manage and monitor traffic if that becomes an issue.
All right, move along from informational material to miscellaneous. Does anybody have anything?
I'll add a few things. I just wanted to say, as far as the opening of the ballots on the 16th, we're still planning on streaming results, or having a stream of results viewable, yes?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. That's on the 16th then, yes?
Correct.
So a couple things, end of the year, and honestly, my email inbox is, is beyond capacity on things, so I wanted to make sure I didn't miss Mr. Herman's dancing. Has that happened? Is that out there?
I have not seen the TikTok yet.
Okay. Savage, right? Savage?
I, again, I hear things, I'm just trying to make sure I'm not missing it somewhere.
I know Mr. Herman is a stickler for getting assignments set on time, so I would hope his assignment comes in on time.
Very good, Jeff. I'll take you up on that, too. Well, maybe we should make a little, little impromptu phone call to Mr. Herman and see what's going on. I do want to say, though, at the back of the school, I'm missing the water slide this year, big time. With all the other events going on, I could have used a little water slide action there. And lastly, I just want to say, if you haven't had a chance, if you have the opportunity to buy some Girl Scouts DVDs, they're available at Price Shoper.
No shameless plug there.
Don't forget the Girl Scouts. And I am still working on the census thing. That hasn't gone away, it's just, it's so far down the list with things that it's hard to get information in and out from, from the Department of Census to get an additional response. The last numbers that came through Colony was around 71% response, Manans was, I think, Were a little low, so just, if you have the opportunity, fill out the census and remind your neighbor to do it.
Very vital to the services that we receive. All set, Bill? Gotcha. Any other folks?
I just wanted to take this opportunity at the end of the school year to thank the administration and the teachers again for everything that they have done to bring normalcy to our children's lives and keep the learning going. It's very much appreciated. I know it was a very hard time, but you did a fabulous job.
On behalf of the faculty and staff, Jim, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'll just touch upon just kind of the situation that we've, we've been in for almost three months now. You know, what has taken place during the last two and a half to three months is really crisis distance learning, right? It's been brought on by, you know, pretty much near ubiquitous restrictions on movement and stay-at-home orders since March, but was it March 18th was that date? The spectrum of the crisis distance learning range from drive-by course, material pickups, to telephone check-ins, to haphazard online lesson plans, to ad hoc video conferences, I mean, all of which can be considered really a low fidelity migration to support the continuity of learning that we really want in our children. I just, I just want to reemphasize that school staff really should use the summer to break to take a pause and catch your breath. It's been, it's been a war we've been through. You know, I would say, reevaluate how you're doing distance learning this summer. You know, it was really an experiment this last spring. We all know that. We learned a lot of lessons, we made a lot of mistakes. You look at our board meeting tonight, noise, all that's still happening, right? So we, you know, you've got to take it with a grain of salt. You can't be serious about everything. So, you know, take a break this summer, reevaluate how you're doing that. You know, administrators are going to take the time off, hopefully to invest in staff. I'm going to make a statement at the next board meeting around kind of the options that are out there. You know, there really are four different options, and I'll go in depth about that. I've been trying to really read up on this. There is no silver bullet that's going to fix all of this for us, but really, you know, we've got to get ready next year for a lot of circumstances, whether it's, you know, a combination of being onsite, being remote, if another spike happens that we have to be able to go remote immediately. So we're going to have to be, you know, I was a Boy Scout, so the salute, be prepared, right? So we, we have the, the advantage of time over the summer, but it's very important that everybody takes the time to themselves. We're certainly going to have PD for staff and administration, I know for the board as well. That's an important time to refresh and get ready for the school year. Again, we were kind of thrust all in this together. So, you know, my hat's off to all of you for all the work that you've done. You know, I've seen it from my high school senior daughter, who's now off to college in the fall, we don't know what that's going to look like, but also my middle school daughter, and, you know, friends and family who have children, do special ed, all different grades, and I've just heard the great stories that are happening. So it's important that we continue to talk about those good stories and not all the bad stuff. There's so much, it feels like the world's on fire in a lot of ways, but we have to remain positive and passionate about education, because there's a lot of good stuff happening, and we'll get through this. So I just wanted to take the time to really thank you all for really going to war this past spring, and really helping our children, helping our families, helping our community. So I very much, on behalf of the board, appreciate all that you've done, whether you be a PTA member, whether you be a community member, a student, a staff member, administrator, someone that's part-time, where you pitched in and assisted, we really appreciate all that you've done to really establish the most normal that we could for our children this past spring. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
So we will move along, we just get to the agenda here. We have, anybody else have any other comments before we move into public comment? Is everybody good? All right, so public comment, please note, during the public comment sessions, members of the community may address the board on agenda and non-agenda items. The board president may limit remarks of individual speakers to a reasonable time. Speakers must identify themselves and the topic on which they would like to make remarks. Looking at.
For tonight? Do you see? Okay.
I've got two. First one came from our nurse Karen. Hello, Karen. Hopefully you're out there. She wrote a note, "I would like to take a moment to say thank you to Mr. Bill Nebbins and his helper Todd. They have been instrumental with the Manans Food, School Pantry. Mr. Nebbins takes his own time to pick up our, our food pantry order every two to three weeks. Each pantry day, Bill and Todd pick up the food and hygiene products from the regional food pantry in Latham. They deliver those items, 900-plus pounds of food to Manans School." This is not all that they do for the pantry. Bill and Todd come back to pick up the items that they offloaded for, for my daughters, and I repackage for families. Bill and Todd then go out and hand-deliver the meals to all the pantry recipients and participants. I cannot thank Mr. Nebbins and Todd enough for what they do to help Manans. Nice work, Bill. I know who that Todd guy is, but kudos, thank you Karen for recognizing that. Appreciate that very much. The other messages from Vanessa, our outgoing PTA president, thank you for your note. Vanessa, the last PTA meeting is scheduled for June 10th, which is this Wednesday at 6:30 PM, virtually, of course. We had a lot of fun on the last one. Members will receive an email with login details, and will also be posted on the PTA website, which is the mannschoolpta.com/meetings. They will be voting on the PTA budget, and also voting on the new board members, President, Treasurer, and Secretary position. Thank you, Vanessa. That's all the questions that I have on my board. Do you have any more additional, or is that good?
Nope, that's all I see, Jeff.
Okay, so I guess at this time, let me just go back to, sorry for flipping screens here. Can we go? So what we need now is a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Take your pick, Jean. So those in favor? Against? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We appreciate your standing with us through technical difficulties and all of the hiccups that we've had, but hopefully it was seamless.
Hopefully, next time, we can do this in person, but time will tell. Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. Sue, you can go ahead and end the recording.
Thanks, everybody. Good evening.
Thank you, have a good night.
Be well.